Welcome to the Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, School Committee Meeting. Would you all stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Nice. If anybody has any public comment tonight, please feel free to sign in on the sheet. If you have any just general statements, now would be the time to do so. But otherwise, you know, as we come up, if you have something, just like, you know, we're gonna start, and welcome everybody to the meeting. Glad to see you here. Adjustments to the agenda, we did have, sure, so there were a couple. We posted a revised agenda earlier this morning. There were a couple of items underneath Policy Subcommittee and then your minutes that I was unable to get to you electronically to review due to our internet outage. So those items, so the first read for Section G will come the next time, as well as the minutes from your meeting on November 7th, I think it was. And then because David was unable to be here, there was another item under Policy Subcommittee that was removed.
So can I just make a point since we're on adjustments to the agenda? And it's a point of order, right? Just to make sure that as we're addressing things and as we're moving things forward, that we understand exactly as a committee why we have the governance, we have the appropriate way to kind of raise things and bring them forward. And just to make sure that the five of us kind of stay in sync on this, right? So while there's not an item currently on the agenda, we did receive a request to have a discussion about an item on the agenda. Totally fine, absolutely appropriate. But part of that attached was a proposed policy, right? So our policy, and we have a policy on how to make policy, which sounds insane.
I just want to stop you right there for just a second. It wasn't a proposed policy at all. It was supposed to be an idea of something along these lines. It wasn't a proposed policy at all.
So I don't want to discuss the policy at all. It's more about, I just want to talk about the governance that kind of, that kind of guides us with these types of things, right? So anything like that would normally go to Policy Sub or if it's about the classroom or the classroom environment, maybe Ed Sub to have a discussion and a revision, at which point those subcommittees would make a proposal to this committee. If in those committees, the members can't agree, which by the way has happened hundreds of times around this table, I can't begin to tell you. A lot of times the members will say, hey, we just don't agree. Let's raise it to the full committee to have a discussion about those types of items. If the members can't even agree to raise it to the committee, which is more rare, but it does happen, it is 100% appropriate and fine for any member to say, hey, I really think this is important to raise and talk about in the full committee. So it's, it's 100% fine to do that. However, to do that, we have to suspend our policy of how we make policy and what we do with policy and how we put policy forward. To do that, to suspend the policy, it requires a two-thirds vote, which we've done in the past. We've taken a first read and automatically made it a second read in adoption. We've suspended the policy. A two-thirds vote for us, because it's technically 3.333 people. It's over three people, would require four members to agree to suspend that policy to bring the policy up for discussion. So I just want to make sure we're clear about that and about how those things would move forward. And there's an avenue to do it, right? There's 100% an avenue to do it, but that's, that is the avenue that we would have to take to do it. And if we brought something forward that was policy-related or Ed Sub-related, I personally, if I was still around the table and I would expect any of you to point out that we would have to suspend the policy to do it, that's all.
So just so that we're clear, that actually wasn't what was being done. We've never at this table had a discussion with the five of us whether or not to kick this particular subject to Policy Sub. It shouldn't have even been discussed in Policy Sub until the five of us have at least decided whether or not we want to create that kind of a policy.
So that's actually, that's, that's not, so nor, there is a written document that I don't want to discuss, and I want to be really clear. My point of order is about the process. We're not discussing the documents.
Absolutely. And so as in that.
Right, no, no, I got it. And as a result, the document, and I'm gonna be really clear with this, is not a public document for distribution in that regard. But, but it should, but anything, any suggestion of any kind of a policy would normally start out in Policy Sub. You can bring it here, right? And you could bring, so for example, we can have a discussion at any point in time about a concept, right? Or an idea or a thought, right? From that perspective. But what I think differentiated, at least for me, which is why I'm raising it to be sure we live within our guidelines and the governance that's set up to protect us and kids and everything else, is there was an actual document that came with this. And so I just want to be clear and careful and make sure that we all stay on the same page so that should we decide to move something like that forward, it's done in a way that at least from a governance perspective is lock solid.
And if I can just mention, I printed out BGB. So it states, this is on our website, "The Policy Subcommittee is charged with reviewing, researching, and recommending all policies and policy revisions to be considered by the PSC. Individual PSC members, other standing committees, the superintendent, or other interested parties should submit policy suggestions along with any pertinent supporting documents to the Policy Subcommittee." So I feel that Policy Sub would be and/or education for a just, this policy. Because having a discussion is one thing, but we were presented, I mean, it had a name, it had a code to it. So to me, that looked like a policy draft, not just.
It was never meant to be the policy draft. It was, and I actually was very clear about that in my communication, that it wasn't any kind of, it wasn't supposed to be that. It was just some, some ideas of what I imagined that we could do if we decided as a committee to move forward.
But didn't look, to me, it didn't look like that. It had an, no.
Either way, we're not going to talk about the actual policy tonight anyways. And I think that my suggestion moving forward might be just to check with Joe Emerson about the correct way to do it.
Right, and so I just, I want to clarify. So what I hear Patrick saying and what you're referencing is, is that your understanding of the current policy BGB is that it would need to come to Policy Sub first. If Policy Sub doesn't agree on moving anything forward, that an individual member could come to the body of five and say, hey, we talked about something in Policy Sub, we didn't bring it to resolution. I would like to talk about it here. In order to do that at this table, it would require a majority vote to suspend the policy on.
It would require a two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds vote, I'm sorry, to suspend the policy on policy adoption. That's what I hear you say.
That's right, that's, there's an avenue. My point is, it doesn't matter what it is, forget this, right? We could be talking about making a policy that everyone has to wear Buffalo Bill shirts on Monday, because I think that's a really good thing to do, right? Forget anything else, right? I think that's a great idea, right? And I want a policy that tells everybody to wear a Buffalo Bill shirt on Monday. Now, it's kind of cuckoo, I get it. But, you know, I would ask you guys in Policy Sub, hey, could you guys talk about this? Bring it up, right? Let's say, you know, you were like, there's no way I'm a Patriots fan, that's never gonna happen. And Allison's like, yeah, I think we should wear a Buffalo Bill shirt, or whoever's on Policy Sub. You guys can't agree, you know, you could bring it, or I could even say, hey, I really want us to talk about this and ask for the policy to be suspended. What, what I'm really getting at is, there's an avenue to do that, right? We can do that. It would require four of us to agree to suspend the policy to do it, but there is an avenue to do it. And I think it's important for us to just know that and, and understand that. That, that's, that's my sole reason for bringing it up.
Sure, all right. So I will talk to Joe Emerson about it, just to make sure that we have it correct and if that's what we need to do then.
Right, so to be clear, it's not, it's not a legal matter with Joe Emerson. It's your current policy that says that this is how it works. Joe's still gonna be happy to talk to you and work through it, but it's not, you're not necessarily asking him for a legal opinion.
Excuse me for a second, is this a public meeting?
Yes.
It is. Are the microphones for recording?
Yeah, they're for activity, they do not amplify in the room.
Because most of us back here can't hear.
There's plenty of seats in the front row, move on up. We'll talk as.
It doesn't make much of a difference, but I'll move up.
Sure. We'll, we'll speak as loudly as we can. Either way, that particular item is not on the agenda for tonight. So we're gonna table it for now. And I'll look into it, and it's not on the agenda, so we don't even have to worry about it right now. And going forward, we'll just make sure, I'll look at the policy and we'll make sure that we all agree that that's what we need to do in order to have a discussion.
No, that's awesome. That's why I raised it as a point of order.
Yep, that's totally fine.
I have no objections to you as a chair being able to set the agenda and whatnot, like that is also.
I can't hear you, ma'am.
Sorry, it is part of policy for the chair to, you know, do the agenda. So that part I don't, you know, disagree with you having ability to do that, but I just think it was a bad precedent.
Well, I think it's just about the governance and making sure that we follow the protocol.
Like we have proceed, or we have policy for.
I wouldn't assume that was your intent, right? Exactly, and, and, you know, I don't know that we need to like raise the level to that.
No, I agree. By the way, I totally agree with that.
This is just about procedure, and if we're not following the right procedure, we're going to in the future. But this is not about, you know.
No, it's learning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. So moving on. So adjustments to the agenda, we just talked about that. Communications.
Sure, so I am happy to share the, I sent out a broadcast email earlier today. I have gotten a handful of questions about the internet outage in the buildings. I'm sure that some of you have as well. I have heard from some folks in the community and from, from students too. So I'm happy to report that the internet, there is internet access in all of our buildings at this point. So it's 6:14 on Tuesday evening, and all five buildings have internet access for students and staff on staff, on school-owned devices. So your cell phones and whatnot are not connecting, but the Chromebooks that you've been issued as a student or a staff member are online. There's functionality to print in each of the buildings. The phones are beginning to work again. The only outstanding issue that we have right now is our Power School server. The Power School server is estimated to be back online on Monday, December 4th. For that reason, elementary report cards will be distributed on Monday, December 11th, instead of Monday, December 4th, to give our staff some time once Power School comes back up to finish that. Once we are able to share, again, our tech department has been working tirelessly since last Monday to restore services and pinpoint what the original root of the problem was. As soon as we are able to pinpoint that, I will communicate what, what the outage, what the purpose of the outage was and how it happened and how it was rectified and how we can, you know, maintain that it doesn't happen again in the future. We don't have all of that information to share right now. At this point, the focus has been on restoration of services. And each day it has gotten a little bit better. I know Lauren, I think you were able to get on today at high school. Yes, that's positive. So we are continuing to plug along. Staff has been amazing. I know that each of us here has been in and out of classrooms. There's been amazing teaching and learning happening even without the internet, believe it or not. And I have heard anecdotally from some folks that they've actually enjoyed the break from the internet. So unforeseen bonus to the situation that we found ourselves in.
Well, my daughter enjoyed not having as much homework because of it, so just saying. Okay, great. So next on the agenda is the approval of a build schedule. The warrants are being circulated, and then we have the superintendent's report.
Sure. So behind Mr. Murphy's head is a couple of slides to go over our maintenance of effort budget for FY '25. So this is very early for us. Generally, I give this presentation in January. For folks that are joining us for the first time, maintenance of effort means doing everything next, everything we're doing this year at next year's prices. So any increases to our transportation contracts, to our contracted services, to salaries associated with collective bargaining. There is a couple of assumptions built into this that we don't generally have just because it is so early, and I'll go through those as well. So again, I'll talk to you about kind of where we're projecting FY '25 to be at this point, as early as it is. Share with you the assumptions that that number includes and then talk about some timeline and next steps. So our current budget this year is $37,670,000. To do everything we're doing this year at next year's prices is $39,574,698. That is a difference of $1.9 million. I think it's important to take a look at the chart below that shows you where we are at this point every year. In a vacuum, that sounds like a crazy number, right? But if you look at kind of this point in previous years, it's not outrageous. You know, generally, just to roll over the budget, just for salaries and whatnot, it's about a million dollars. There are some assumptions in here. We have been fortunate enough in the past few years to do some special education pre-buy. So that means using year-end funds from one fiscal year to pre-purchase special education tuition for the upcoming school year. That is one of the only things that municipal finance law allows you to pre-purchase. Last year, we purchased about $600,000. So that, this maintenance of effort budget, the $1.9 million, assumes not doing special education pre-buy. I can tell you that there are some funds in our budget right now in '24 that are set aside for that. So I am very optimistic that the $500,000 that we have here would be able to come off of that number. So just like that, you're down to $1.4 million. There are a couple of other assumptions in here. There is, the Operational Services Division, OSD, sets special education tuition rates for the Commonwealth. Last year, that tuition increase was 15%. We talked a lot about that number at this table and the ability for a district like Pembroke to even take on a hit like that in one year. Historically, the increases had been anywhere between 2% and 4%. 15% was, was quite a number. There's a lot of conversation at the state level about that. There is, I think Sue's gonna talk about it in a little bit. There is some legislation out there for some supplemental funds for districts to, to help kind of mitigate that huge increase. Unfortunately, Pembroke does not meet the bar for those supplemental funds. There is a formula associated with that, and I think there's 14 districts in the state that are able to access those supplemental funds, but again, still moving in the right direction. OSD has set their tuitions next year at a 5.25% increase. So much better than the 14 and 15 from the year before, but still a little bit higher than the 2% or 4% that we had seen in years past.
And it's 5.25% on top of 15%.
Of this, right. We have a transportation contract with first students, that is a multi-year contract. So those rates are already set for next year. That's a 4.25% increase. You'll remember, last year, we did go out to bid for that contract because the increase was 8%. So again, going out to bid, which is our due diligence, was, allowed us some flexibility and they came in at 4.25%, which is much better sound business practice than just rolling with the 8%. So there is also a cost associated with special education transportation, just as favorite topic. At times, to transport a student to their placement is just as expensive as the placement itself. So we have some, some students that are traveling to placements in Western or Waltham or even Rhode Island, and the transportation cost associated with those students is $60,000, $70,000. So as those costs increase, again, year over year, with additional students, the cost goes up. The assumption that we're making for circuit breaker reimbursement, so again, circuit breaker reimbursement is a fund set up at the state level that allows districts to seek relief for tuition costs in excess of a floor that is set at the state. This number that we have built into this FY '25 assumes a 75% reimbursement rate for instructional expenses and a 57% reimbursement rate for transportation. Again, this is something that when we're talking with our legislators is something that we can advocate for. When this formula was first set up, it was based off 100% reimbursement for instructional over the threshold, 100% reimbursement for transportation. We just got to 50% for transportation two years ago. So again, there's some flexibility on the legislative side to bring this formula to where it should be, which then gives relief to districts like Pembroke. So those are some early assumptions that we have built into this budget. There's, you know, again, just sharing with you some historical special education numbers. You'll see last year, obviously, we had about an 11% increase with that OSD WAPR increase. This year, it's, it's much lower, but still higher than year over year. So costs are going up at a rate faster than our budget is going up, which is again, something that we've talked with our representatives about capping the amount that tuitions can increase at the same 2.5% that our property taxes are capped at in that.
Erin, just a couple of questions here. Does this assume the same mix of special education placements that we have? The same number of students?
It does, yeah. So it does, I do go through and take into account, so we do have, when students reach the age of 22, regardless of it, if it's the first day of school, the middle of the school year, or the last school year, once they're 22, they age out. So I do, I did go in and account for those. And we have a couple of students that are in our pipeline for placements right now, so there's a placeholder in there from that, but it's, it's pretty much the same mix.
But I think what's really important about this, this slide particularly is, in 10 years, those costs have grown by 75%. This is a 100% unfunded mandate from the Commonwealth. So the expectation is that the local district will bear 100% of the cost and receive zero, really, well, in fairness, they get some circuit breaker money, but receive only a small portion of that money back from the Commonwealth. It's one of the many unfunded mandates that are out there. A student can move in next year that you don't know about and bring a $200,000 or $250,000 price tag to them, which is why you need a little flexibility to be able to move things around and react and pivot to those items. So it's, it's a big number.
Right, and in three years ago, we were, we were successful in establishing a special education stabilization fund. So again, we had been trying for years to get to that point, and we were able to do that. So that's a place where there's money set aside that if we were to have a last-minute move-in of a family and we weren't able to absorb the costs within our budget or a transportation item had changed drastically, that we have a place to go to in order to fund that for that year. But again, we would have to build it into our operating budget for the next year.
And we have asked our legislators for help in this area.
Right.
Multiple times.
Right, and something that you kind of had hit upon, Patrick, that is also a conversation with our legislators is, there is in the Chapter 70 formula an allotment for special education students that is greater than the per pupil for general education students. It is still not even nearly enough to educate a child in district with supports that you already have, right? So conversation around increasing that number in the formula is something that is also worthy of talking with, with our representatives about too, so.
Because this essentially gives us unlimited exposure to the possibility of, like, that number could double based on, you know, it's unlikely. It's probably never gonna happen, but we have massive exposure on this side.
There's a timeline based on when students move in or move out, that you're fiscally responsible or just programmatically responsible. So a student isn't gonna show up on October 1st that we just have to pay for, right? They're already accounted for in the district that they came from, but the following year, we have to budget for them. Unless it's a collaborative.
And then, Erin, if I could just make one point, because I do see some new faces, right? Which is good. And it just may be that I haven't been around the table in a couple of years. But the numbers that Erin is showing with the $1.9 million differential, I can't stress enough that that is a normal number, right? I mean, as you're rolling the budget, that is a normal number. There's a whole bunch of things, as Erin pointed out, just the pre-buy number and what have you, that eat into that. So we do not have a $1.9 million deficit. That is not actually what that says, which is a little bit of a different type of thing to be able to sort of wrap your head around. We have, the rollover means that the budget would be $1.9 million higher at first blush. This is kind of back in the envelope, but we do not have a $1.9 million deficit. They're very different things.
Yes, we're most likely gonna get at least a little bit of increase from Chapter 70. Not enough to keep up.
Probably $60,000 or something.
And an increase from the town that will, so that'll offset a good chunk of it. And then there's still possibilities of retirements and stuff like that.
Yeah, there's a host of.
Right, we take some revolving fund offsets with the transportation. As we go through the budget cycle, that's usually $100,000 to $125,000 that we take off. So there are adjustments that will happen to this number over the course of the next three or four months. But just truly at this point, to do everything we're doing right now at next year's prices, we'd need an additional $1.9 million. I just included at the end of the slide deck, just a little bit of a process and timeline. You know, obviously, this is a fluid document and a fluid process. We do have a joint budget subcommittee meeting scheduled tomorrow night with two representatives from the select board to just go over our maintenance of effort, also and to start to talk about some timelines and strategy associated with that. So there will be a budget tab on the website in the morning that says FY '25 budget. So all of these documents will be housed there. And as we add to them throughout the process, we'll make sure that all of the presentations are there also.
Well, thank you for doing this so early, because I know you did it a few months early. It's really helpful to be able to have these conversations with the town. So thank you, I know it's a lot of extra work.
I'm just gonna skip out of order to give Jess a minute to set up her laptop for the social emotional update, if you guys don't mind taking a look in your packet. You have consideration for approval for two overnight field trips for the Model UN Club. So these are, for Model UN conference, I'm sorry, Model UN is a course at Pembroke High School. But these are a request from Jessica Rose, who is the teacher of that course for two conferences. One's at BC and one is at BU. My impression was that they would do one or the other, depending on student interest, but if there's student interest, it would go for both. But you can see the price tag associated with it is pretty hefty. It's about $430 a student, so I would imagine that they'll probably land on doing one versus the other.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the overnight field trip for Model UN?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, aye's have it. And we'll do separately, did you already, you didn't talk about this yet?
No, there's a.
Oh, they're both the same?
Yep.
Oh, they're both, okay.
Yep, the only other thing under my report before Jess gets started is a consideration for approval for surplus materials. In your packet, you have a very wonderfully written letter from Mary Beth outlining the surplus ELA materials that we have in our building. So over the summer, you approved the Bryantville surplus material for some treasures and DRA assessments. This is just the corresponding request from Habalock and Forrest.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the surplus materials? As, well, the materials as surplus, I guess?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye's have it.
You go, Jess, you're ready.
Okay, all right. So typically in the fall, we like to give a social emotional learning update to the committee. I know in the, most recently, we talked about second step, so we'll mention that just briefly in here. The primary focus really is to talk about the continued needs of our students as well as the work that's going on in the Titan Compass Labs at each of our three elementary schools, the middle school now, and the high school. So Mr. Murphy will be talking about elementary, and Dr. McGarago will talk about the Titan Compass Room, which is new this year. And then Mr. Dalbit will talk about the Compass Room continuation of that, staffed a little bit different this year as we go forward. So within the presentation, I'll talk a little bit about just our current staffing, our student needs, some of the curricular tools we're using, and then some additional resources that we have implemented this year. So our staffing hasn't changed too much. We still fully support each of our buildings with a social worker, and then we have four school psychologists. So the high school does share a school psychologist for testing purposes in special education with Habamok, so there are four school psychologists. As you can see, you know, their responsibilities are, are similar, but then a little bit different as, in regards to the school psychologist really being part of that special education team and doing a lot of that psychological kind of testing for special education process. Both roles are fully supporting students, doing triage incidents that come up, working kind of as that family and DCF liaison, more as the social worker's role. They both participate in our student support teams, which happen at the building level in each of the buildings as well. And then a big part of their role, obviously, is working and supporting students in that counseling and kind of social skill groups. And I'll talk about that data in a second. As I mentioned, those Titan Compass Rooms, this year, elementary and PCMS are staffed with a paraprofessional in each of those. And then the high school, we are lucky to have a teacher and a paraprofessional in that room. So as we've talked about in the past, and we see kind of those student challenges, we have, I'll talk in a couple of minutes, just about some of the data pieces that have changed over the last few years. And we've talked a lot about kind of coming, not just out of the pandemic, but prior even to students really continuing to struggle with that behavioral dysregulation and coping skills, managing emotions, anxiety, social conflicts, and kind of how to navigate that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just, and maybe I'm the only one here who doesn't know what it is. What is behavioral dysregulation?
So when students are not regulated, that they are unable to kind of control their emotions, their behavioral presentation.
It's like when you were stomping your feet because you wanted that seat over there before the meeting.
Be able to verbalize why they are frustrated.
Or when my pills go to overtime, I, yeah, I get it.
Basically being in control of their body.
Yeah, I, I got it.
Okay.
In all seriousness, I, thank you.
Okay. Some school avoidance continues with that school refusal. And then overall executive functioning skills, so time management, organization, kind of that school life balance. Those continue to be the biggest kind of challenges that our mental health staff see.
Are you noticing coming out of the pandemic an increase in these issues?
Absolutely, yes. So students, certainly with the behavioral dysregulation and executive functioning being able. and executive functioning being able to kind of manage. It's definitely getting better as we implement kind of curricular tools such as Second Step. And the supports are hugely helpful at the building level. So the Titan Compass Rooms that each of the principals will talk about, and how we use those to support all students, not just in special education, but in general education, have greatly kind of reduced the needs or the impact kind of of students accessing every day. But absolutely. So this kind of gives a little bit of breakdown about data. That right side, when we talk about what we see in differences over the last five years. So typically in special education and students on 504s, the disability category of an emotional disability would have been the smallest kind of disability category. So students presenting, usually it was about a 1% to 3% of our students would be categorized or presenting with an emotional disability. That has increased in, as you can see, since 2019 to 11% of our students in special education and students who qualify for 504s.
Can you explain the years again? So 11% was when and 3% is when?
Currently. So right now, of our students in special education and who qualify for Section 504 plans, there's 11% of those students qualify with an emotional disability compared to 3%.
Would you attribute, like, do you think it's like all COVID related? Or do, like, what are you attributing all of this, this increased need?
Yep, so I would contribute, I would say a good portion is it that is the COVID-related pandemic coming out of that. Students are, there's a variety of reasons. I think technology, social media has a huge impact on students' abilities to kind of be able to function in a social situations, regulating their anxiety, being independent. I see the principals nodding, so feel free to chime in as well, so.
I have a question. Is it spread generally equally between the three levels? Or is it higher in age groups?
I was actually just doing the math.
Yeah.
It seems to be highest in pre-K to six on average.
The left side is not just special education and 504s. So there's kind of two pieces of data here. I wanted to just, just because we talked about the emotional piece of it, highlight that increase. The left side of counseling and social skills needs is not just special education students. So that is general ed students as well, accessing those social skills groups with our mental health staff. 220 students across the three elementary schools. Last year, we ended about 40 students less. So we've certainly seen an increase when I presented the budget last March, April, March, in, in the elementary area in regards to accessing kind of those, that counselor need. Seven, eight, nine, 12, it's about the same. It's a little bit less in each of those grade spans, but it's relatively the same.
And another question, is this considered like an acceptable caseload for the, our current staff?
Yes, I think we are staffed appropriately for, I think it's important that we maintain the staffing in each of the buildings for our social worker and our school psychologist. But they have pretty much even caseloads across the district.
I, I do think, though, bringing it down to the individual child level for a second, just assuming that 346 kids on the left is the base, right? That you're taking a percentage. I mean, I get it, there's some general ed in there. But the majority is IEP, correct?
Not necessarily. A lot of the social skills groups, and it really varies per building. North Pembroke seems to have a good amount of students in general education that access the social skills groups, so.
But even so, the change from 3% in 2019
Correct.
to 11% of students, that's somewhere between 20 and 25 more kids are exhibiting enough of an emotional disorder to receive services, which.
Correct.
So it's not just kids that are exhibiting an emotional issue or emotional disorders. It's enough to receive services, which is a heightened level. And to your point, I think, Sue, right, it, it shows the adverse effects of the pandemic, right? Whether it be choices in the pandemic or what have you. But those are kids, those are real kids in our small community that are being impacted like that. It's, it's a lot.
Yeah, and so I don't have exact data, and I'm happy to share that, Mike, I knew you asked. We certainly saw more of an increase in the seven through 12 students presenting with an emotional disability. I don't have the breakdown with me tonight, but I think Donna and Mark would agree that if we talk about kind of special education increases at the secondary level, more presenting with that emotional disability.
I think, and to be clear, like, if somebody's on an IEP or 504, they have significant documentation that it's needed. And to have that percentage of increase is very significant. And I, you know, last meeting, we talked about the Second Step program and teaching kids, you know, how to voice their emotions, you know, at a very young age. And, you know, I've gotten questions from the community. I'm just saying this out loud because I know a lot of people have questions about it. I've got a lot of questions from the community about why that's important. And this sort of highlights it, that the teachers need to have some sort of ability to control their classroom. But if everybody's, you know, sort of, they don't have a place to go or any place to verbalize their feelings, it becomes an issue.
Perhaps, and then it's impacting not only that student's access, but kind of classroom kind of functioning.
Yeah.
So these tools that we're putting into place, such as Second Step, is our hope is that we're intervening and teaching kids as they're much younger so that that even if they're presenting with a disability, that we can provide that direct instruction for students to be able to use tools and strategies more as they get older, right, so. So just talking about those curricular tools, just a few, like I said, Second Step. Some of the others that were mentioned by the teachers, that they're still implementing, our social thinking curriculum, responsive classroom, calm classrooms, zones of regulation, and restorative practice as we work with students who may become dysregulated and have difficulty with that social kind of language and ability to kind of work in groups and with peers at the secondary level. Again, just repeating, some of the things we've even recently talked about in regards to some of the supports and curriculum that we have in place. Last year, the middle school implemented signs of suicide. Certainly, their 21st century skills curriculum at both seventh and eighth grade at PCMS supports lots of different areas of social emotional learning through their thematic units. We are currently, I believe, doing break free from depression at the high school for grade nine. We do use that screening tool as a way to kind of intervene and refer. And then we do have a therapy dog at the high school that's new in the last few years. So our social worker, one of them, has a therapy dog that she has in school.
Jess, I do have a question.
Sure.
And before I ask, full disclosure, I'm the chief financial officer of the company that actually puts out signs of suicide. So I just want to make that clear before I ask a question. Why are we using it in just seventh and eighth grade and not seven through 12? Is there?
So we, we've talked about it a little bit. So the break free from depression does manage some of those pieces.
Got it.
And it is something that's, that's been implemented at the high school pretty successfully. So the social workers and their kind of feedback or.
No, as long as it's a tool, I think, for those kids, I think it's important.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I just wanted to clarify, because some, again, questions from the community. We don't use Second Step in the middle or high school.
Not currently, no.
No. And, you know, and then I have a couple of questions about what is social thinking in responsive classroom?
Sure. So social thinking is a curriculum that we've implemented for a number of years. And it really is teaching a child to be aware of their actions and their words. So how does it make people feel? Trying to think, there, there's different, like, there, yeah, they're learning different types of lingo to help with behavior. So one of them is expected and unexpected behavior. So it's what's expected of you versus what's unexpected. It also comes with, like, it's all visual. It's like red, yellow, and green zones, so kids understand, you know, you're making me have like green thoughts, which would be like positive thoughts by, by your actions. If you're using unkind words, you know, you're making me have yellow thoughts. I'm feeling, you know, somewhat sad, or red would obviously be angry. So it's different kind of tools for students to help them kind of regulate and understand how their emotions and words affect others and how others perceive them, so.
I would also just, just to jump off of that and just indicate that that's not, it's not a sit-down program where the kids, like, you know, sitting, listening to the teacher, like, getting that, like, time away from learning almost. This is more like embedded, it provides a framework for like a discussion. So as a student is maybe saying something, you know, that maybe is not, you know, classroom appropriate, it gives the teacher some leverage to say, all right, we're just gonna stop really quickly. We're just gonna kind of recap what you just said. And how is that making kind of the regular class feel about that? It just, it kind of makes that student kind of internalize, you know, myself internalize, what am I saying and how is it affecting people? And then we go right back onto the discussion, where we're doing math, we're doing ELA, whatever. So I don't want you to think it was like a whole different, you know, program.
Correct. And in special education, some of our social workers or school psychologists will teach kids more in direct, small groups, social thinking kind of strategies, so that they're learning to do it independently, kind of in a small group, to be able to transfer it into the classroom.
Okay.
And then responsive classroom is, again, same thing. It's not a per se lesson, it's just more of a methodology of coming together as a class. I'm trying to think, like, morning meeting is an example. So students are coming together each part of their morning. They're, you know, welcoming each other. It's, it's more about teaching community and kind of being collaborative as a classroom.
Okay, all right, great, thanks.
Sure. I'm sorry, I know that the committee switched a few times. I feel like I've presented so many times on these things, I forget, so.
At least this is the second.
Patrick probably remembers most of them, but, yeah. And then some of the, a couple of things that we've implemented new this year. We do have a partnership with Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth. It is a professional development resource for primarily right now our mental health staff. We did purchase a membership, so our social workers, our school psychologists, our principals, et cetera, have access to professional development. A lot of it's webinar-based. There are some online pieces, they can sign up for courses. Just talking to mental health staff, these are some of the examples of things they've already taken this school year in order to kind of increase their repertoire and strategies and tools. So it's, it's a nice resource. We don't always have the ability to bring speakers in or send people out. It's harder to go to like a class, so these are pretty easy. And there are a lot of modules or webinars that are available for our staff. They did request it. Our social workers at the high school had requested this for a couple of years in a row now, but we were able, I was able to grant fund this.
That's great.
Good. Grant funding is always good.
Yeah. And then another resource, I think you've probably heard us talk about, is Interface Referral Service. Pembroke had funded this a few years back. Then it stopped for a little while, I think probably during COVID. And so the district was able to co-fund this with PTAD. And it is a referral system for all of Pembroke residents, not just the school system. So what it is, is it's a, basically a helpline. So a resident can call the helpline looking for mental health services. And the, you know, the person answering the phone, the agency, will go through, you know, what the person's looking for in services, ask them lots of questions, like, do you prefer, you know, male, a female, a day, a night, local, you know, are you willing to travel? What's your insurance? And they do the legwork for the caller. So they're gonna find availability for, whether it's doctors or agencies, that take the insurance and have availability for new patients. They also follow backup, so after services begin, it's more kind of that wraparound to check in to make sure that the services are helpful, that they're working. So it's been a great resource in the past. Again, our social workers have really advocated for this. So I know Erin worked with PTAD on being able to kind of co-fund that this year. All right, any other questions before I turn it over to the principals? Just to talk a little bit about each of their compass rooms. Okay, Mr. Murphy?
Perfect. So I will chat just a little bit about the Titan Lab, and I know I've spoken on a few occasions to you already about this. But the three elementary school principals were chatting about what should we be presenting to you today? And we always thought it was like important to come back to why did we establish this in the first place? And this is now our second year in full force with the, what we're now calling the Titan Lab. When we originally brought it to you, we were calling it the therapeutic resource room. So it just didn't have the same ring as a.
Like, please don't call it that.
Exactly, right. So I think that the, the silly points are really providing the in-the-moment kind of structures for kids. If you can imagine a kid coming into school, being either dysregulated or maybe even school-phobic, having trouble getting into the building, just having a location that had, that is fully staffed in a predictable environment where that kid can go for 15, 20 minutes to get adjusted means the world. So that kind of in a nutshell is what the Titan Lab is. And I think that the other building principals will talk a little bit about how that equates at those levels as well. But it really provides a student with in-the-moment supports with the opportunity for some of those kids that are more dysregulated and just taking a little bit longer to have access to the gen ed curriculum within that location. And how do we do that? We have, you know, runners going down to the classroom, adding worksheets with the current assignments in the classroom, and then having the staff to be able to support that. So we are obviously staffed by a paraprofessional who's been trained in that location. And it's also supported by a building psychologist and social worker. And that's the same across all three elementary school buildings.
Mike, is, is this in any way disruptive to the classroom with the paraprofessional back and forth?
I would, no, not at all. So I would say removing a student or having the ability for a child to leave, either on his or her own, or at the discretion of the teacher, is actually more advantageous for the classroom.
Got it.
It prevents a lot more dysregulation within the classroom. And also, you know, there's that component where, you know, it's just a kid and we just want to make sure that their integrity is being, you know, valued as well.
Kids used to just walk to the nurse, they had a tummy ache, they had a headache, they had a, because they needed a break, right?
That's true.
I had one, by the way.
But the poor nurse.
No, the poor nurse is right. I think this is, I think this is great. I'm not arguing the point, but I just was curious of the effect on the classroom.
Right.
Can, can the student, just a technical question, can the student just leave? Does he tell the teacher where he's going?
These kids are predetermined. So when we talk about the entrance and exit criteria, we talk about these kids all going through a student support team. So that student support team in all the buildings, album, principal, vice principal, school psychologist, school social worker, and school nurse. That's pretty much who's mixed up. We all have roundtable discussions once a week, and we talk about who are the kids that we think, based upon our conversations with teachers, our own visuals on kids, who should be able to access this? And that, that changes from week to week when we add to that list. And then the teachers are notified of who those kids are, the kids are notified, and usually the parents, well, the parents are also brought in as well. Sorry, I always forget that. Do I see a question?
Yep.
Perfect. All right. So some of those areas of focus in the Titan Lab, and visuals are always great, right? So this is something that a child may see when they go into the Titan Lab, and it's called the Zones of Regulation. And it really is just more of a visual, hearing what they're feeling right now with what's up on the chart, you know? And it's, it's taking away some of that dialogue between an adult and the child. And the child is really just starting to name kind of what's going on in their, in their mind right then. So opportunities for breaks and also timeouts. So breaks are different than timeouts. You know, breaks are usually predetermined. And, you know, I have kiddos that are going at nine o'clock, 12 o'clock, and right before they get on the bus. You know, some, some kids are taking three breaks, some kids are taking one break a day. And again, they're both staff-initiated and student-initiated. And then we also provide that in-class support. So sometimes the person in the Titan Lab, the paraprofessional is there, is able to actually transition the student back to class and spend 15, 20 minutes with them to make sure that they're adjusting back to the classroom discussion. And then we talked about those tools, I think Jessica had mentioned it as well, giving the kids some strategies about when you are feeling overwhelmed in class. What are some things you can do? Or you're feeling overwhelmed getting out of the car and coming into the school. What are some things you can expect? Those are all tools that we try to provide to the kids, and we actually write them down. We have pictures of them, and it goes a very long way. Those emotional regulation strategies, that kind of goes with those anxiety reduction strategies. And then those preventative check-ins. I, I go back to the relationships that kids build with staff members in this program is amazing. So kids are looking for solid adult interactions, and they're looking for it. And they can't always get it from their classroom teacher, because the classroom teacher has 20, 25 kids in front of them trying to teach. So this also provides an opportunity for kids to go and have those discussions. This is on my mind, can you help me with this? And we see a lot of value in that as well. And then the earned breaks as well. There's a component where, you know, if a student is going to spend, you know, 15 minutes, 20 minutes in the classroom and being productive, are you able to earn a break and actually come down and play a quick game? are you able to earn a break and actually come down and play a quick game of, you know, go fish or whatever? Yep, and get you right back to class. Kids, kids love that, and they actually, you know, they thrive on that type of benefit. And then the impact on students, we are seeing between eight, eight to 15 students on average really utilizing the Titan Lab every single day, and these kids might be coming down for, again, one, maybe three, sometimes four, in varying time of the day as well. So that number changes, and we had just talked about that with Mike, when we have these student support team meetings, I may have two kids that come off of the Titan Lab every couple of weeks, and then it might be two or three more added, or there might be none, none added for the next couple of weeks. It really depends upon how kids are and how they're responding to classroom instruction.
That's it. Try this one?
So this is the first year for the Titan Compass Lab at the middle school. I call it Titan Compass because they were the Titan Lab, and they were the compass room, and we were a little bit of the bridge between the two. So we had worked really closely, as I talked about at previous meetings, with the elementary school looking at their model, and really closely with the high school at their model to make sure we could kind of target how we structured our program to be developmentally appropriate. So the, as Mike talked about, it's a support room, a little bit transitory, right? So like longer periods of time if you need it, or shorter periods of time, but really based on the level of student need. The physical layout and comfort in the room is a way that we also reinforce the, our caring view, right? So if students are coming back after like significant medical illness, or hospitalization, or have some schoolphobia, the physical layout of the room is an important precursor to how we think about you and how we increase comfort levels in school, as you might maybe catch up on work before we transition you back into like a full day. So that, again, as Mike had said, really is based on the specific student, their need, working really closely with Mr. Dan O'Neil, who is our Titan Compass Room Supervisor, as well as administration, school psychologist, social worker, and the guidance counselors. So we had 11 students during term run that were assigned, this is the breakdown kind of the reasoning, we, you know, I know you often refer them as tiers, and we do also do call them tiers, but this is kind of the more significant reasons why they went. On average, students were in the compass room at least once a day for 17 days, but most students were assigned to the compass room for one period every day. Something to clarify, that third point, 11 students were in compass for kind of tiered for those reasons. When, when I refer to most students, those were students who had medical excuse, medical excuse from gym for various reasons. So sometimes those students, and we have a lot of them, because like there's a lot of sports at the secondary level, and invariably students get hurt, before, students would sit in the nurse's office, maybe for two, three weeks with a broken leg, or whatever the case may be, it's just, and that's okay, it's not ideal, there's a lot of germs in the nurse's office, and there's a lot of private conversations in the nurse's office, right? And so what we let kids know is, you can be in the nurse's office if you're on an ME, medically excused, you can be in the guidance waiting room quietly if that feels like a better place for you, but we also show them the compass room and say, if you want to come here during period three, you could come here and get your work done. So what we're finding is a lot of kids find that's a really quiet, safe space to go to, so 17 students went there this term for that, so that will be continuing. And then two students were assigned indefinitely, which for specific areas of their curriculum, based on what we understand, is there a more significant level of need? Again, we always review that and think about it and talk about it. One of the things we really think about is, so Mr. O'Neil is the compass supervisor, he is working regularly with teachers and communicating back and forth, and he is tracking the grades to make sure that not only are we supporting the students emotionally, but that we're seeing the academic benefits of the level of support room, so I felt like this was an important slide to present to you, because I know that all of these programs have a financial cost, and I wanted to like present this piece to you. So we were able to kind of track this and have some really nice results for some students who sometimes have really struggled historically in the past with academics. So typically, when they've been in the compass room, those 11 students are often also concurrently receive the support from the social worker, school psychologist, or the counseling, or the school counselor. We've used it multiple times when students are really in an emotional crisis, as like a quiet, safe place when we're kind of getting other pieces in place, we can be really proactive with that. There's been tons of instruction, small group or individual throughout the year, also students have been doing testing in there, and that number is much higher, going into it for a little bit of testing. We modify workload based on what the teachers and the counselors, as well as Mr. O'Neil, feel like they can manage, so the communication is just happening throughout the day to make sure we're matching needs. There's also a piece where we want to make sure that we support them appropriately, but we also help them ease out of compass, right? So you, right, appropriately, right? Like, so that has been a real focus of ours, that we don't get kids stuck there unless we feel like that's exactly what they need, so those conversations are happening constantly. And again, the collaboration has just been ongoing and really successful, but I really credit that to my principal colleagues who were really, really supportive in helping us develop a program that matches our needs.
Any questions?
Mark, you're up.
Questions?
So, yeah, again, I want to begin by just, once again, thanking this committee for their commitment to these types of supports. I know you get a lot of feedback from the community asking about why and everything else, and these kind of presentations are so important, because I do want everyone to know how important they are, and how effective they are. So I do thank you very much for that. I know Jessica touched on some of the, kind of the tier one supports that we do at the high school, she mentioned the therapy dog, and she mentioned the S-Bro screening tool, and she mentioned break free from depression, which we are doing this week with our ninth graders. There are other ones as well, I just wanted to highlight before we get into the kind of tier two and tier three supports at the school. Our social workers this year have committed to using Titan time more advertentiously to run groups for students. They've always done that with students that are on ed plans, as part of their ed plan, it's built into it, but they're expanding that now to more referral based, right? So the kids who are on an ed plan, they do have those social groups, targeted themes, right, based on a student's disability or a student's behavioral patterns, and those are year-long, right, because they're required. Then we, on a, we have kind of a smaller term, smaller group sessions for students who aren't maybe on a plan, but through SST, we've identified these students who are struggling with particular behavioral, you know, certain behaviors, so anxiety, for instance, okay? So they will identify those students and bring them in during Titan time for those supports. And I'm really proud of the work they've done, they got together this summer and planned those out, and, and they're implementing them this year. The numbers are growing as the year goes on, as you would expect, because more kids are identifying, you know, during the year that we meant I've been thinking about. So those are some of the topics they have right there, okay, CBT, anxiety reduction, stress management, conflict resolution, self-esteem, and so on and so forth, those are some of the topics that they hit during the course of the year. And there's more, but those are just some of the, some of the more popular ones, shall we say. But then shifting it then to compass specifically, we have always had that as a level of intervention there, we call it tier one interventions, students who have been absent for four or more school, uh, school days, for whatever reason, whether, whether it's a cold, or they've broken their leg, or maybe it is mental health, but those students, we know they've been absent for so many days in a row, they do need some support when they return. Those students are identified as tier one, because they really are more than anything else, physical ailments more than anything else. They will eventually leave once they're caught up, right? There is no need for them to stay there any longer, and the goal is to get them out pretty quickly. You know, the amount of time that they're per day varies on their needs, we don't want them, obviously, every time they're in compass, they're missing a class, not always, some kids have study halls built into their schedule, but there are times where they may come in for the first two periods of the day for two days in a row, and then the third day it's maybe one period, and then by the fourth day, we get them back in, alright? What we've been able to do now, because of the support you provided us adding more staff, we're able to take those tier two students, and those are students who have come back to us from a hospitalization for mental health reasons. We know they need the academic support, we know that, but patching them up and sending them on their way is much more difficult than a student who sprained his ankle. So they've stayed a little bit longer, and what we can now do is, even with those tier two students who we say, you're gonna need much, in fact, you may need permanent compass support, we now call them tier three, and we develop a schedule for them to be in there, if they have a study hall, they don't go to study hall, they go to compass, or they can go on an ad needed basis, we talked about dysregulation, alright? So a student who, it could be 10 o'clock in the morning, and the first three hours of the day have been problem-free, something happens that triggers them, they are dysregulated, they have a home base at compass, no matter what time of day it is. There's a process on the get there, there's a process of the report to us that they are struggling, but they go to compass, the work gets set down to them, because we have two adults in the room, a certified teacher course, and a paraprofessional, we have two rooms that are connected by the joining door, so we can spread them out, differentiate based on needs, we're able, we're able to, to capture kids there for a much longer period of time. And that's the part that I'm really most thankful for. I talk about the extra, and the, I'm sorry, the entrance criteria in there on that, on that bullet there, that, that second bullet, again, SST plays a huge role in that, alright? Our guidance staff, our mental health staff, assistant principals, principals, nurse, SRO, our compass teacher, we're all there in the room together, so we're learning about kids at the same time, and we determine who's ready to go to tier three, or who should move to tier three at that time to get as a team. And then we check in on them every couple of weeks, alright? Anytime we, we apply an intervention strategy, we set a timeline to go back and revisit that, is it working? If it is, should we continue, or can we kind of scale back? If it isn't, what else, what other intervention do you need to try? Because that response intervention is so important. So that all happens through SST. And so right now, and I, I think that that's going to change a little bit based on the holidays, right? But currently, there are 20 students that are identified as tier three students that have full access to compass when they need it. They could need it when they first get off the bus, or get dropped off by their parents, and they report right to compass as their home base, as that comfort spot that Mike talked about, or like I said, maybe it's during advisory, and we have put students in TESSA, which is advisory, during Titan time, show claim kids, during study halls, or again, like I said, on an ad needed basis. That number is, has increased significantly from this time last year, alright? So last year was the first year they were able to offer tier three supports, we had a very tight entrance criteria for that, because we really didn't know what would happen if we had opened up more, could we handle the flow, after living for a year? Even during the middle of last year, we realized that we really could accommodate more students, so we kind of loosened the criteria to enter into the, into the tier three, and so right now, we're at 20. What I'm learning is, and I'm surprised at the number of students, by the way, who are not accepting the offer to use compass at the tier three level. I know that we talked about some of the reasons why students are struggling in school avoidance was one of the bullet points that Jessica had talked about. That to me is one of the largest increases. I, I think that the obvious thing is to say it's because of COVID, I don't think it's the only thing, I think the impact of social media, I think even transcends, I think it trumps it, I really do. It's really reshaped our students' idea of reality and happiness and success, and it's so warped, it's, it's really frightening. So one of my personal goals with Erin, and also on the school improvement plan that we talked about last week, was to reduce the number of students that have lost credit in a course due to absences. At the high school, please don't forget, we're credit-bearing, right, courses, you need credits to graduate from high school, and we have an attendance policy, and students can lose credit if they are absent 17 or more times unexcused in a full-year course, or nine or more times in a half-year course. If they do that, we try several things, I try to put them on contracts, even if they have 20 absences, we don't just say, well, you're out, see, you know, you mustn't stay home. We try to put them on contracts so they can buy back the credit by, you know, doing X, Y, and Z, whatever the contract spells out. A lot of times that works, in fact, prior to last year, it worked almost at a hundred percent rate. I think an important factor here is that during the years right after COVID, right, the 2021 school year, 2022 school year, we had waived our attendance policy because of COVID. Last year was the first year we brought it back, and so after two years of not having that, you know, that accountability, some students, like, you know, just weren't really used to that, and so I hope by design this year, that number's reduced. But my goal is to really encourage tier three use for kids to bring that down. Right now, this year, there are currently four students who have exceeded our attendance policy already. Last year, that number was 10, at the same time at the end of term one. So there is reduction there, but I certainly, I, I want to be certainly realistic, that number is growing. In fact, if not for a possible being down, I would say that number is more than four right now. In fact, I'm certain it's five, and maybe even six students who have exceeded the attendance policy, alright? I think the holidays, as I said earlier, really plays a role in that. And that's really where the surprise comes, we have students who, who are on contracts, and I have put in the contract, you must use compass as tier three, right, to combat this. If you can't get to school because you're stuck, get in the building, right, we'll help you when you're in the building. And so that, that is a struggle, that's a struggle, all those four students struggle for two of them for sure. So we're getting there, right, we're getting there, so.
If I could just say for a second, I've seen the, I, I'm a big fan of, of compass, and I think I've mentioned it in meetings before, I was, when I was in school, I had a couple sicknesses that made me, I had extended absences from school, and one of the things about going back is the longer you're out, the harder it is to get back, it starts playing tricks with your mind, and, you know, the anxiety and everything, so I think just, instead of throwing kids right back in, I think it's great that they have a way to kind of transition back in and kind of help them get, get caught up, so that they're not, their grades aren't getting screwed up, and they're not, you know, missing out on credits and everything.
Yeah, that's absolutely true, and that's, I think, it's the biggest reason for it, you know, and so the kids we use as a soft landing in the morning, right? And there are a number of kids, of those 20, you know, I'd say more than half of them are in there each and every morning from seven, even if it's 7:20 before the bell rings, our school day is on 7:30, but that room's open at 7:20 sometimes earlier, the kids are in there before the bell rings, and even that 10-minute period is enough for them to say, okay, I'm ready. Sometimes it's 7:45, you know, sometimes it's not until second block, but that's okay, right? They're getting instruction from the teacher that's in there, it's not the same as the classroom teacher, right? TESSA's not certified in ma, in math and science, she's certified in English, right? But she does her best to learn what's going on. I was in there today to check in with a kid, and she was working on algebra two with another student. So she, she certainly is doing her share, you know, so, but it is effective for that reason, Mike.
When, when a child is identified as needing compass, or having compass available to them, are, are parents informed? Do we bring the parents into the process too?
Every time, I've not seen it at schools, but yeah, every time.
Yeah, great. And then, before, I have a comment on just sort of the, the social, emotional components of what we're doing. One of the challenges is I read, especially at the middle school and high school level, is being able to find those kids that are falling through the cracks. So it's not the kids that might be right there and obvious in need of a service like this, but it's the kid herself withdrawing, he's here, he or she's eating alone, they're not, they don't have the big friend group, they don't, and those are the kids that are quietly at risk, right? And this touches every school, this touches every community. How are we identifying, and it's not, there's no perfect answer here, but how are we identifying those kids?
Yeah, that's a great question, I'll just jump in. We have a referral process, and any staff member in the building can refer a student, so if it's a teacher who sees a kid withdraw, or if it's a teacher who's on lunch duty and sees a kid sitting by himself or herself, our school nurse refers students. And there are a large number of students who are brought to us by teachers, and then our weekly SST meeting, that's when we discuss that, and that's when the guidance counselors get involved and have one-on-one check-ins with the student, we contact home. So we do have opportunities, we do have lots of eyes on students that help us see those kids who are seemingly withdrawing from us.
We have a kid day, a weekly kid day meeting with each team, every day six. The agenda is kind of public, anyone that has those kids, so anyone that has concerns about a student can put the student's name on the agenda, which why they're, what they're concerned about the students, we talk about it and come up with interventions. So we, that, that meeting, I mean, from So we, that meeting, I mean, from seven thirty in the morning till ten forty-three every, actually tomorrow's our kid day meetings. So that's kind of one of the processes, and all the teachers in Paris that work with those students have access to those documents, it's a live document with tabs. As far as lunch goes, very much, if you see a student eat sitting by themselves at lunch, it can, middle school can be really tough years. So I'm in there, the school, you know, everyone's really aware of that. What you try to think about is how do you help a child connect with other students without embarrassing them more? So what we typically have found to be helpful, and I can think of three instances off the top of my head this year, is talking to some of those kids who are just like, got a really well-developed moral compass, and you say, hey, would you mind, like, having your friends, and just kind of going over there, and like, so we don't ask the kid to like, oh, can you go join this group? Because, you know, you can just get up in the middle of lunch, walk over there, it'll be very embarrassing.
Literally the most embarrassing thing ever.
You'll feel great, and yeah, you know the cool fact is going to go, right? You ask other, you ask a group of kids that you know, kind of, can be there, including my student leadership kids, like, hey, see that kid just started, or that kid seems like he's struggling a little bit, and then they surround, they go around and sit with the kid. Even if the kid doesn't feel like talking, right, so there's times, like, we don't want to socialize, right? But sometimes just sitting in a group, you feel more comfortable even if you don't have to interact. So that's how we, we look at it. But yeah, it's, anytime we see a kid sitting by themselves, we're hyper-aware of it, or if they're not eating, you know, we always say, you know, you're good, you need anything. So we really feel like we monitor that pretty well.
And Patrick, at the elementary level, it's more along the lines of that SST, that student support team meeting. There's a lot of power in having conversations about kids. So if, you know, our school psychologist is outside at doing recess duty, as he's doing, you know, once or twice a week, and he brings up a student saying, oh, I noticed so-and-so on the outskirts, and really only associating with one particular student, and really not comfortable associating with others, the school social workers who was out there the other two days would say, actually, I saw the same thing. And then the nurse chimes in and says, you know what? I see that kid after recess come right down to the, to my office complaining of a stomachache. So it's those conversations that really kind of solidify everything. Can I ask you a question?
And Compass also. We also now use Compass a little bit for students. We identify students and work with them on that. Some of the students go to Compass for lunch.
I, okay, I was going to say too, as part of the action plan for the goal I talked about in terms of reducing the number of students, that was credit, I'm now, I've communicated right into a guidance council, any student that's been absent from school for three days requires a phone call home if we've not heard from the parent. And so again, I know you're talking about kids who aren't presenting because they're not absent, but, I mean, three days is not a very long period of time to be absent. It's not all that uncommon to have, you know, get a bad cold, and sometimes their parents don't call, but that, to me, it's the first point of contact. That's the first time, you know, that's an opportunity to start answering, asking questions.
That's great.
And maybe from, in that conversation, the mother or father may open up to say, you know.
He's really struggling, yeah. I, I think that my, my personal philosophy is just, I think the parent knows the child, right? In making sure that, and it sounds like it's exactly what you're doing, you're, you're figuring out what's going on at home, as well as what's going, going on in the school. And one of the things I just want to add a little bit on your presentation, I remember 2010, sitting around this table, and I believe it was Erin at the time with Frank, brought up the idea of having, hiring a social worker. And I argued against it vehemently. I was like, we don't need it, it's not the school's place, why are we spending the money there? I just don't understand it. And it is in thirteen years, so think about that, thirteen years, we brought up the concept that thirteen years ago, one social worker. I look at the supports that we have and understand the need, and the need in those thirteen years has grown so extensively. And it's, it's hard, because when, you know, I'm fifty-five years old, right? When I was in high school, this didn't even exist, wasn't even talked about. But the reality is, these challenges affect every community. And yes, COVID, I think, has enhanced them, but they were here before COVID was here. And if the schools can do something to reach a kid, and to touch a kid, and to find a kid, it, it is the emblem of a free and fair public education, of keeping that kid alive and in the, in the school. I think this is so important in, in education today, and it is so fundamentally, unfortunately necessary, I, I think, in education today. But in just such a short period of time, our schools have literally gone from just an education center to an education in a well-being center. And so many of these tools that you put in place, I think are great, I would, I would actually ask us to think about broadening some of at least the battling of depression tools and what have you, outside of just ninth grade in, in the high school, no matter to me what it is, right? It's about reaching kids and finding them, but this is, it is so important, and I think what you guys are doing is, is fantastic.
With your support, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Actually, Mark, you had mentioned that, I thought, maybe, I'm not sure if I heard you right, that there were more kids now that were saying they didn't need the Compass when you were offering it to them?
Not more.
And if that was a good or a bad thing?
I'm surprised that there's any, right? You know, so. And again, it's the school-avoiding students that are saying, I don't, I don't need it, because once I get to school, I'm fine. It's just a getting there part.
Yeah.
And I think there's a stigma, right, for some students who don't want to go in there, right? You know? I guess our initial thoughts were, if you build it, they will come. And that's what we had, kind of, a more of a tighter entrance process there, so we could just control that. As we open it up, the floodgates, right, they're not opening. And like I said, two of the young students that are on attendance culture right now, I had to put it in the contract, because they just don't want to use it.
Wow.
So I'm just trying to get them in the building, so it was credit, you know?
Yeah.
And that's still a struggle for those students, that's still a struggle. So I'm not saying, it's not more, I'm surprised that there's any.
Yeah, I wasn't sure though if I heard right. I just wanted to see, and I didn't know if it was good, bad, what the, the deal was with that, so I just wanted to get that clarified.
Well, thank you very much for all you do. I know it's, I'm listening to my son's stories, just as a substitute teacher, I know that you're dealing with a lot, so. I appreciate everything you do, and appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so on to subcommittee liaison updates.
Sure. Just in the back of the paper packet that you have now, I added a couple of documents that Sue had shared with me earlier this evening from Representative Cutler and Senator Moran's office. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to read them to you, I don't think Sue wants to read them to you either, but I will, will post them on the website also, so that folks can see them, but I turned over.
Yep, so David reached out to the, to Senator Moran and both of our legislators, and we did hear back from Josh and Susan. David's not here to present it, so, but it'll be on the website for anybody who wants to.
And you have any packets?
Sure, thank you.
Under Policy Subcommittee, you have, in your packet, Section D for a second read and approval. So you remember, these were the budget policies that when we brought up as the first read, Patrick had some concerns. It went through Budget Sub, and, sure. So underneath Policy Subcommittee, you have Section D for a second read and approval. These are the policies associated with budget and budget development. When you took them as a first read back in October, there were some concerns about whether or not we needed them or the relevance of them. The policies were kicked to Budget Sub to take a look at, and then after Budget Sub, back to Policy Sub. So all of those steps have happened in your packet for second readers and approval, is amended policies that came out of the conversations at Policy and Budget Sub. It really took away some of the goal-type policies that there was some concern about, and it combined a few of the others, and took out some of the redundancy in the process and timeline pieces. So there's just three policies, DB, which is Budget Process, DG, which is Financial Operations, and then DJE, which is Procurement Requirements. So that's kind of where we landed.
So I'll move to accept the amended policies, DB, DG, and DJE as presented.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and it's unanimous.
The second section that you have in your packet for second read and approval is Policy Section F, so those are the facilities, planning, and development policies. We had two current policies, FF, naming facilities, and FFA. There was no proposed action on those. There are two new policies, FA, Facilities Development Goals, and FCB, Retirement of Facilities. We actually, I think, talked about at Policy Sub about taking out FA, Facilities Development Goals. This is just a function of not being able to use our files for the past couple of days. So it's just FCB that is for a second read and approval.
So I don't have to go through the goals thing?
No, we talked about it.
So move to accept and approve policy FCB.